I mean, if everybody here thinks, and if, in fact, we're incorrect and we're illegal.
You need to know.
We need to know. And, and we're really willing to do that research. Uh, Mr. Demarest, would you have a suggestion for an attorney? You're a local municipal. Saturday night. Yes, ma'am?
Perhaps you should consult with the municipal association. Their legal department.
Yeah, they're...
That's what they're there for. They, they specialize in helping municipalities and the legalities of what they do and don't do. That would be my recommendation.
You don't agree with them, but you think they're a cure?
They're usually very ambiguous with us. We usually don't get solid answers. They very seldom will say yes or no. They're very uncommittal.
But as a starting point, at least, I mean, if you've got their opinion...
We started with them. We ended up with our attorney. We always start with them because we don't have to pay for them.
What did they say?
They were totally uncommittal. Yes, yes. If the issue for everybody here, or most people here, is a second opinion with that type of firm, I'm happy to chase that. That's why we have public hearings. Sir?
When we got, as far as the charter commission itself, the one that was in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I ended up interviewing about a half a dozen attorneys, including the one at Bernstein Sure. And I, as I remember, my memory could be wrong, or it could be getting a little inaccurate as my age increases. But I believe that person at Bernstein Sure had actually drafted the area. I did talk to somebody who had all the files and everything. But I interviewed two major firms up there in Portland, and also interviewed a firm over in Saco, who we ended up choosing. And the gentleman there, whose name I, I don't remember at this time, but I do have files on him, ended up being our attorney for the charter commission. He was paid by the money allocated by the select board to the charter commission for that purpose, or for our budget, actually. And, but we wanted to have an independent attorney from the town attorney, just that they should do it so conflict of interest. And that's my point. But it didn't, but I did go and talk to, and nobody else wanted to go with me. So I went by myself and talked to the two major firms in Portland, and then ended up with, and I think that gentleman that we ended up with was the town attorney for Saco.
Yeah.
So he had pretty good experience, and he was very helpful, et cetera, et cetera. I can dig up his name if somebody wants it, I'm sure, in my wonderful filing system at home.
Yeah, yeah. If you get it to us, we'll...
I can provide that information.
Yeah, it was Edward Mallett. He was from Jamison Murphy &amp; Law. His name was Edward Mallett. Jamison Murphy &amp; Law. Two eight two five nine six six.
Who is that? You say the one we used, or the one you used?
No, 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 the one that you, the one you used.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I, I can help them. I mean, I'm a big lawyer, too.
Okay, we'll get a legal opinion from that gentleman. See what we've got to go through. We'll have, we've got a meeting tomorrow night. We're gonna have under new business, take a vote, and get that process started.
The ballot has not been signed off on yet because there are more changes coming. So you do have an opportunity to make any changes to the ballot that you need to.
What changes?
Because they haven't gone to print. Well, if, if you get a second opinion, and what you're doing is considered illegal, and you need to take some charter amendment off the ballot. So it hasn't, I'm just telling you, it hasn't been signed off on yet. It has not gone to print.
I don't know how quickly we can get a second opinion, but we will.
Well, there's always jingling, too. You know, if, if it is an issue, you have, you have to jingle it out.
That won't work.
Happens before, you know. But you're gonna have a gubernatorial in two years. So worst-case scenario, you could do it during the gubernatorial, because you will have enough always there, because a bunch of people want to get rid of it. So we're not a two-year...
All right.
I guess last thing, and then I'm done on this. I'm not saying what you're doing is illegal. I'm not sitting here trying to say you're doing something you think is illegal. That's not what I'm saying.
Yeah.
My opinion is, and that's just an opinion. That's it. The time that I have vested to do this, and then I see some of the things in the last few months that's going on around the town, it's, wow, this is bringing back memories of the reason why I got involved. That's it. That's it. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. All right. Do we want to talk about the town clerk position? Yes or no? We do. Same situation. I will read the articles. Article five. Six, excuse me. Uh, legislate, legislative authority of town meeting. No, it was my voice. The town meeting shall be by secret ballot, act on the following. Election of the following town officials. Selectmen, road commissioner, IRSU fifty-seven, board of directors, and budget committee members. Article seven. Elections, municipal elections. The regular election for the members of the board of selectmen, road commissioner, IRSU fifty-seven, board of directors, and budget committee, and other municipal offices, as may be required, shall be held by secret ballot within seven business days before annual town meeting. The term of office for the board of selectmen, the road commissioner, IRSU fifty-seven, board of directors, and budget committee shall be for a period of three years, commencing at the first regular meeting of their position. Uh, appointment authority. The following officials and boards shall be appointed by the board of selectmen full-time position, assessor, building inspector, code enforcement officer, nine eleven addressing officer, plumbing inspector, fire chief, fire department personnel, secretary to the board, tax collector, uh, town clerk, transfer station operator, treasurer. Article nine. Appointed positions, full-time. Town clerk responsible for the preparation and maintenance of official documents, supervision of elections, insurance of various licenses and permits, recording various documents, preparation of records. Work is performed in accordance with town ordinances, state, and federal laws. The town clerk shall exercise all powers and responsibilities conferred or imposed by the law such respective offices. Again, in summary on this one. Removal town clerk as elected official. Removal town clerk from municipal election. Adding town clerk as an appointed position. Adding town clerk position summary. That's what those articles were. Is there any discussion there? Yes, sir.
You gave a reason for wanting to do the road commissioner. Why, why, why do you want to do the town clerk position?
At some point, same deal. Polly's not gonna be around forever. She's done a great job. She's worked at, she's got credentials that are beyond, I mean, she's a lifetime, whatever. She does a great job. Think about what comes after. When Polly decides she doesn't want to work for the town alignment anymore, we'd like to have the best possible opportunity to be able to hire a town clerk that's ready to go, all trained. And that's the whole reason.
And so that, the way that would be worded would be after this current term?
Yes.
That she's on, that she just got elected to. So in three years, if she stays, or she would be appointed by you and not elected anymore?
Right.
So that couldn't be changed to, uh, when, when she decides to leave, that she would be elected until then?
You know why.
How would, I mean...
If, I'll tell you why. This is a public hearing. If that's what Polly just said, the ballots aren't there. The ballots are not finished yet. That could be under consideration. I, I, I would like to get it done sooner than that. I really would. Go ahead.
Well, okay, so in articles two, three, we've removed road commissioner.
Yeah.
But in articles six and seven, we've put them, we've put road commissioner back in.
Yes, because we had to word it that way for the vote. Because we had to, we had to put in the original articles with the, with what we were doing.
Okay.
That was the way they legal, that was the legal language we had to use. And that's...
So you don't think that could be confusing to somebody?
I know it's confusing.
Standing in there and being like, oh, well, I just voted to remove him.
Yes.
Then if I vote yes on this, then I'm putting him back in.
Right. Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
We went over this with the attorney back and forth, my God. And that's what it had to be.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
So, John, what you're saying, you could have an article saying that it's not going to become appointed until the current, it's gonna remain elected until the current town clerk's...
Yeah. We can do that.
That's not what he's saying.
What'd he say?
He's saying until that person retires.
Yeah.
And, and this would be for the current term.
It's not, yeah, that's what we, that's what I, we don't want it for the current term. We want it to be...
Current term's for three years.
Yeah. Or we want it to be, could be five years, six years. Whenever she decides to move on, then become the point. Have you heard right of the word?
I don't know. That's, I, I, you know what? Why don't I say that's an attorney question? Instead of me being wrong and saying something?
What possibly would you lose an, an election because of the thing?
Yeah. If you lose the, the next election, then you can make it a point.
Is that what you're trying to say? She has to win. Yeah.
That's right.
Right. You can't do that, Leo, because she loses the election, the person who wins the election's appointed. There's an appoint, if they've elected her, yeah.
Well, you don't know if anybody did. Sometimes you wouldn't work.
Would it be okay? I know that our town clerk is not a resident of Lyman, but, uh, I would really like to know what she thinks about this. What do you think, Paul?
Well, I think an elected clerk is directly accountable to the citizens of the community and serves at the will of the people. An appointed clerk is responsible to the board of selectmen. An elected clerk can avoid town politics, and the only pressure is to do what is right. An appointed clerk is just one more employee that works under the direction of the select board.
I'm looking to check right here. That's a perfect example of an elected person campaigning right there.
She was on one of the things.
She asked her...
I know that.
We, we, we voted her, we voted her in.
I know that.
If you guys don't, it doesn't take any of you to have a, uh, an opinion about an employee, okay? That you can have some distaste to it and, and make that person, uh, of their life miserable, okay? Which has happened, okay? And I'm not going to get into it, okay? We are, we are the people. We should elect that person. That's the way it should be. They should not have, you guys should not have jurisdiction over a town clerk. That town clerk, I didn't realize. I, I, I did some learning on my own on how valuable a town clerk is, and how important a town clerk is, and the knowledge that they have to have in order to do their job here. And that should not be having an opinion of any of you folks.
No different than anybody else in this office, sir.
Oh, no, all I...
Oh, no, sir.
Yeah.
No.
Check them.
Oh, well, that's your opinion, that's mine, okay? She's got to know the rules. She knows, gonna know the, uh, how to do elections and, and all that. You guys don't have that, that knowledge.
You don't have to.
That's what you paid for to do. That's what a town clerk is there to do.
Everybody in the office has the responsibility to do their job. We used to have an elected fire chief. Now we have an appointed one. Things have gotten more complicated. There's more going on. More towns than not have gone to appointed people in all, in all positions for that reason. Lisa?
When did the elected fire chief, was that before the local fire rescue became one of the town?
Yes. And we had, let's talk about it. We had bylaws that made stipulations, but what that person had to do, it wasn't just John Henry off the street, the fire chief.
Right.
And when we voted as an incorporated to sell it to the towns, we put that stipulation in, in the sales agreement, that they had to have these qualifications, because we didn't want the selectmen to just put somebody, no names, but somebody off the street with no qualifications for that position. It felt very strong in that. So there are ways to do things correctly, and there are political ways to do things. I'll read that.
Sir?
My feeling is totally different. I think an appointed position for a clerk is a great way to go. My, my vote goes to the select people that run the town. I look, I look to the select board to make the everyday decision. For someone to go out there and put thirty, forty signs out and get voted in, I have a tough time with that. I've worked for Palmer for a few years, and Polly did a great job for us. In time I called, she answered, she answered my question, she moved forward. Never had any complaints from the residents. That's not the issue. I think the appointed position to the select board is the way to go in this position. That's the way I feel. Again, it's just an opinion. I put my faith in the select, in the vote that I put for the select board member. That's where my, my vote is. I'm asking you individuals who have a pretty crappy job to run the town.
Mr. Gold?
John Gold. Having been a selectman for a couple of terms, I hate to see someone diminish the other positions in this town. I too think it should be appointed. But everyone, the building inspector, the tax assessor, everybody, the treasurer, they all have to follow rules, and they all have to be top-notch on the game.
Yes.
They, when I was a selectman, they were on right and left hands. You know? And they're valuable tools.
Right. Right, exactly. With half-time, that's their full-time professionals. Go ahead, John.
And at the end of the day, you come in, you do your job, you do a good job at it, you've got nothing to worry about. That's it. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the town getting the poll in is, or, and I appreciate YouTube for others doing it. That's, that's great.
Yeah, that's those true ladies.
That's, that's where you get people involved, to know what's going on in our local government. Great job. I'm trying to get TV access in here, I ran out of time. Great job. I hope it continues.
You, you know, sign of a good manager is he surrounds themselves with knowledgeable and capable people. I mean, that's exactly what you guys are trying to do, I think.
Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't keep my mouth shut. I, you know, the, the YouTube is great. I listen to the YouTube. You call people liars. You call people liars. I heard it, John, you did it.
He was lying.
Do a lot of that, well, whatever. You don't do that in a public thing, okay? You just don't do that. Okay? There's a lot of stuff that is going on, and I've been here a long time, okay? And I, I thought this stuff was done. I thought this stuff, I thought the Good Old Boy Network was done. When, when she came in here and, and there was, there was changes, okay? To go and berate people and do things as, as was done, and your HR person that was, was here was wrong. That's not the way you do business. This is not the way that, that the town, and I'm not, I'm not going to get into any details. You know what I'm talking about, okay? So to, to have appointed versus elected or whatever.
Okay, we're gonna move the question on this. You know, I will respond briefly. I'll say... Go ahead. There's... I can't discuss any of this with you.
You can't? Okay.
But what I can say is, what you are privy to is the very, very Tiffany iceberg, and accumulation of a lot of frustration, years' worth of frustration. Was poorly handled, I'll give you that. The gentleman lost his temper with an employee. That's always wrong, always wrong. But, and that's all I'm gonna say. All right, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move the question.
Can I finish what I have to say?
Please.
If I can finish the three and a half? A clerk's salary is paid by the community, but a clerk is a direct agent of the state, conducting business under state law. An elected clerk is a key element in maintaining checks and balances at the top of the level of local government. The duties and responsibilities of a town clerk are numerous and varied. There is no, no place in the statutes that you can find a complete list of all the duties for the clerk, rather the duties can be found throughout many, many statutes. If an elected clerk is asked to do something that stretches the law, the clerk needs to have the ability to say no, unlike an appointed clerk who works under the appointing authority and could have fear of repercussions. An elected clerk can express their opinion when they feel something is not quite right in local government. Elected clerks are independent in their actions, and it gives the people another elected official to go to with help or concerns. The people voted for the town charter back in two thousand twelve, which stated the town clerk is elected. Changing the position from elected to appointed was soundly defeated a few times since I have been in this position for over twelve years. In two thousand sixteen, the charter was to be revised, calling for the clerk's position to be changed to appointed and to go to a town manager form of government. But the amendments were put before the voters at an election in June, when there wasn't enough people to vote, rather than in the November presidential. The question to change the clerk from elected to appointed had no, had more no votes than yes votes. Again, the people tried to speak. It has been the will of the people to keep the clerk elected. The people are trusted to vote for the board of selectmen to run their town. Why shouldn't they keep their voting rights and be trusted to continue electing their town clerks? Perhaps it's time to revisit adopting the town manager form of government. That had more yes votes than no. An elected clerk's position, I feel...
No hope for them either.
An elected clerk's position is better off being put before thirty-nine-hundred-plus voters once every three years than to be at the discretion of five selectmen that could or could not have a special agenda at some point in time, or could or not, could or could not have an issue with the appointed clerk. An elected town clerk who was serving the town to the best of their ability and looking out for the better interests of the community will have longevity in the elected position, as has been the case with prior clerks in Lyman. Shirley Harrison was elected clerk from nineteen seventy-six through two thousand and nine. Inez Elliott before her, from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen seventy-six. And Harold Bullard before her. There has been an elected clerk in Lyman for many years. If the people see how someone who they feel could do a better job would disagree with the handling of the clerk's position, then they have the power to either recall the clerk or elect someone else, just like they can with the board of selectmen. The election process has obviously been working in Lyman. The town of Lyman has elected clerks who have served admirably, admirably for many, many years. There is no valid reason to take this responsibility away from the people. It's the select board who wants to change it, not the will of the people. At the last select board meeting, the select board chair stated that this question regarding change of the town clerk from elected to appointed will be voted on every year as long as he is sitting there. The voice of the people needs to remain intact. The people's power should never, ever be taken out of the hands of many and be placed in the hands of a few. It's their right to vote. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
I'd like to respond to that. Give me just a minute. That's exactly what I'm telling you. As an elected official, the town clerk has very few rights. For example, no time and a half, no minimum wage, no right to breaks, no family sick leave, no unemployment. She's not even protected by executive session. This question you just asked me that I had to stop. I was by law. I could not discuss that. Elected, I can. The state looks at this like we're politicians. You see what politicians say to other people on TV. This protects the town clerk a lot more being appointed than elected. She is totally unprotected by this court. You think we're a bunch of orangutans up here, and we can do things at will? We cannot with our employees. We're bound. With an elect, another elected official? We all gotta behave. We, we're not subject to political will. That's what I'm saying. There's a lot more protection, personal protection, for an employee than an elected official. Say, say we all walk. You elect another board, they redo this, they say, hey, well, there's, town alignment doesn't need a full-time clerk. Polly, you don't need to work forty hours a week. Twenty's enough. They can do that. These protections stop that. It gets us up where we're supposed to be. And to me, if y'all worried about us acting irrationally, you kind of want to make her appointed. Because, and this is there, um, check them, it's all state statutes, all there. I've got a more detailed one, if anybody wants it. But that's the other driving power of this. Lisa? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to vouch it.
No, sorry. In response to that, I just want to say that there are a lot of salary-exempt people that are, do not get time and a half over forty hours. You should not, uh, an elected official isn't subject to federal minimum wage that in this office and every other town office in the state that has a, a full-time, um, town clerk again, pretty much guarantee that they're paid more than a minimum wage, because there is a competitive market out there for town clerks.
I agree with that, what you're saying. My, my thing, my reason for mentioning that is, what I've heard from this group is that they think the town clerk is more protected from us being elected than she, than she is being appointed.
You don't set her hours. She can work any hours she wants. That's like just, um, vacation chicken.
That's true.
You know, you don't set her hours.
We decide what we pay her.
People really decide that. And I'm sure that the budget committee would step in and do what's right, and...
They don't vote. It's not their budget, it's the select's budget. They know them.
You know what just happened with the dental insurance. So I'm sure that if more, with more than that would happen with a salary.
Let's just assume something that you don't know. That's where we're at.
I'm just saying, my point was, you were talking about general protections. More protection is...
You brought that up. You have your...
Yes, and you have it too, right?
I took it off your table.
Yes, yes, I want you to have it. What I'm saying is, one of the reasons is that the employee has more protections when they're elected. Well, an employee has more protections than an elected official. It's pure, it's pure and simple, it's there.
And they run for the elected position, so they're aware. Or they should be. They're willing to go that route.
Okay. I've, I've got nothing. Anybody else got anything? All right. The next charter... About time.
No, I'm done.
Yes. All right. The next one is circulate a certificate form should be... Okay, this is about... Now I've gotta stop thinking about what I was thinking about. This is about petitions. And the reason for this change was, we've got the, um, consuming alcohol on premises Sundays coming up. Town alignment never voted for that. We've got pretty nice... We've got Pretty Nice Family Restaurant, over on Lyman Water Harbor. Done a nice job, and so cooperative with anything with us. They wanted to petition to, uh, to get signatures for this, and get support. They had to, the way that charter reels it reads, is you've gotta be a town resident to do that. Um, the initial discussion for us, we were going to change petitions to, if you owned a business in the town of Lyman, you could petition, or be a resident. There was some discussion on that, and then we thought it might be simple, just to go to the state. Rule, rules. And, um, so I'll read that. Um, registered voter in the state of Maine hereby swear affirm, I personally circulated this form, all signatures of this petition made my presence, to the best of my knowledge and belief. Each signature is the signature of the person whose name purports to be that each signer has signed no more than one petition, and that each signer had the opportunity to read the petition before signing. Uh, each signer is a registered voter of the town of Lyman. No. They didn't cross out town alignment, registered voter of Maine. Just didn't get printed correctly.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Signer.
Yeah, the registered voter.
Signer.
That's correct, yeah, okay. Getting punchy here. Any discussion on that one?
Was this just to go with the state of Maine laws?
Yes.
Are there, I was wondering, maybe those business owners that wanna circulate petitions that don't live here, is that why this came forward? How did this come up?
Well, I start, I told you about the restaurant, the family rest- and, and the, this came up because, um, they wanted to petition about this consuming alcohol on, on premises Sunday. And, they, the owners of that business don't live in Lyman.
Okay.
So, we got thinking about it, and there's other businesses, and we didn't want to exclude that, to only Lyman residents. We, you know, that's, that's where that came from.
Is this gonna be a twenty percent vote?
Yeah, yeah, I need to take, yeah, it's charter. Sir.
Somebody else can do the petition, as long as it has been to the state of Maine, but it has to be a Lyman voter that signed it.
Correct.
And it has to go to the clerk and the chairman.
Yes, oh yeah. Oh, gotta be better. Anybody wanna talk about that? Alright. That means, uh, we're gonna close this public hearing on the charter. And, uh, we'll open the public hearing on the other articles. Alright. Article eleven, shall the municipality authorize the state to issue licenses for the sale of liquor to be consumed on premises of licensed establishments on Sundays? That's article eleven, um, pretty much coincides with the charter amendment I just read you. Anybody wanna talk about that?
Could you read that again?
That would be an issue. Article eleven, shall the municipality authorize the state to issue licenses for the sale of liquor to be consumed on the premises of licensed establishments on Sundays? For one of the few towns, there was a bunch, this came to the news last summer, um, sometime back, I don't know what year, I don't know what happened, we never voted on it to legalize Sunday sales on premises.
We did, we did kinda connect it.
Yeah, please, please.
Cause I'm old enough to remember this. What happened, Lane Merrill bought the store over here, right?
Yeah.
And, and he wanted to do Sunday sales, which we never, never allowed to do, right?
Yeah.
Well, they put, put, put it in an article, right? It passed to sell takeout, right? But the part, the part of the article is to do in a restaurant, right?
Yeah.
Didn't pass.
Oh, I got you.
And nobody ever picked up on it.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
Okay, alright. And then what happened, we was, we were going to have to vote on it, then COVID hit, and the state actu- actually, we could push this out, we wouldn't have, we don't have to vote on it now, we've got time. Because of, the state changed with the COVID, and gave us more time, that we already worked on the article, and talked with them, so you get your vote on it in November.
So basically, what the state has already issued license for, we're making it a state voter in the ballot, if we vote yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Well, the state's gonna start issuing the licenses-
Right.
-come July, if the town doesn't vote against.
Right.
Right, but right now, they have a license to continue until-
Yes, right. Right.
They think they provisional license is because of this issue.
Yeah. Alright. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to purchase a new pump tanka to replace the nineteen-ninety-three pumper engine and two thousand-two pumper, at a purchase price not to exceed six hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Furthermore, to see if the town will vote to fund its share of the purchase prices followed, to apply the funds received for selling, trading, the nineteen-ninety-three pumper engine and two thousand-two pumper to the lease purchase price, and to enter into a ten-year lease purchase finance agreement on such terms as the board of selectmen deem advisable. The town of Dayton and the town of Lyman will own an equal share of this new vehicle. To be effective, both towns must vote to approve. Lisa?
Um, is this the, is this part of the capital, can we just do both at the same time, ambulance and? Can we talk about both at the same time?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so, is this part of the Jared Harriman capital improvement plan?
Can you read the ambulance in a minute, before we talk about?
Yeah, I'll do that. Oh, no issue. To see if the town will vote to purchase a new ambulance to replace the twenty-two-thousand-seven ambulance, as a purchase price not to exceed two hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Furthermore, to see if the town will vote to fund its share of the purchase price as follows, to apply the funds received for selling, trading, the two thousand-seven ambulance to the lease purchase price, and enter into a seven-year lease purchase financing agreement on such terms as the board of selectmen deem advisable. The town of Dayton and the town of Lyman will own an equal share of the new vehicle. To be effective, both towns must vote to approve. Okay, sure.
So, is this, I, when I was on the budget, maybe I'm all that. Um, Jared Harriman came up with a capital plan for replacing the truck, set the fire station, and one was to save the money over the course of years, and purchase the vehicle outright, and the other was to lease purchase. So I'm assuming that you're going with the lease purchase option. Would that be on all of the trucks, or are you going to, in addition to having these lease, um, lease payments due every year, are you not still be saving money into the capital account?
No, this will take up most of the capital account for trucks. Unless we vote right now, what we're voting, Jared's plan had an escalating amount in it. Um, and I, sitting here right now, I can't tell you what it is, what it was. But, this plan, this particular lease for both these things, would be funded at the current investment for each town. The savings plan, we escalated the contribution of each town. So, it grew every year. This doesn't. And the other issue we were looking at, price of trucks goes up six, seven percent every year, money doesn't grow that fast, two percent finance, and it seemed to work, money-wise.
So the interest rate on lease to use it is three percent?
Yeah, what is it, what is it now?
Well, the, all the work that I've done right now, they have not been able to commit to the interest rate, given that we won't sign till November. The estimates right now are between two-point-two-five percent and two-point-seven-five percent.
So they won't lock those rates in?
Not till we commit.
So anything could happen to the young ones.
John?
Yep.
Question, o- over the course of this ten-year lease and the, the other one, whatever it is, for the ambulance? You're gonna be making your payments?
Yeah.
So you're not gonna be putting anything into the capital?
Unless we increase the capital plan.
Money's still gonna be in the capital plan, but it's the same amount. It's not gonna be increased.
But I mean, it's gonna fund the lease.
It's gonna fund the lease, yeah.
So what happens at the end of that, ten years or seventeen years, you got zero in your capital?
The original part of the capital plan called for that contribution for a town to go up a little bit, every year. This is funded for the same amount of what our, both towns' contribution is right now. So if we stay with the capital plan, and we do that escalating amount, that will go in there. The issue is, with, to get, we would have to increase the contribution to the capital plan a lot harder, and a lot faster, to keep up with inflation and interest and everything else, to actually physically put the money away to buy these trucks. And that's why this, Matt's got a ton of time on-
Well, I speak, the only thing I'm saying is, if you remember back when we started this, with the new project, we were behind the eight ball, we didn't have the money, and we took a big hit for a long time.
Right.
Mr. Harriman put up that.
So the, so the plan that we are still currently working on, right now calls for, and I'm sorry, I usually turn, talk in fire powered terms, but this is the overall number, not fifty percent per, per town. Currently, we're putting, according, according to the plan, and what was approved this last July, was eighty thousand dollars more. Over the next ten years, that will lead the increase to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right, depending on how we finance this, and what gets voted on, and what doesn't get voted on, we're looking at a annual payment of somewhere between ninety and a hundred dollars. So by the end of that ten years, there will be more money being, being put in the bank. We won't be exhausting the account, at least, the first few years maybe, but as we get towards year five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, we'll actually be putting money in the bank. So hopefully in year ten, when the next capital improvement purchase needs to be made, we'll have some money in the bank to do as the selectmen see fit, whether to put it down, paying it on like a-
I guess what scares me is, and we kinda ran into this with the ambulance, is that, yeah, we have the plan going like this, and then all of a sudden, something happens three-quarters of the way through, and then you don't have the money, and then we're right back where we were.
Well, we just had something like that happen, we wrecked an ambulance, and, um, no, excuse me, rectify a truck, I'm sorry, wrecked out a little forestry truck. Um, what we did with that, um, the replacement value of that was what, twenty-two-fifty and two-eighty? We scoured all around, we bought a used truck with twelve thousand miles on it, what did we pay that, seventy?
All of a sudden, it's down to eighty-nine thousand.
Yeah, and that's going through the shop, all done, we got a foster truck, better than one. We were gonna buy with twelve thousand miles on it, for a third of the money. We're trying to do those things too. This truck, we went round and round, we spent a lot of time looking for used trucks. Um, easy to find a ten-wheel pump boat that has got no gear or anything on it. This truck's a little bit specialized, because it's carrying four guys in full gear. Now, one of the sa- there's a couple savings to this, that are, that are really significant. One of them is, over what, a period of ten years, fifty thousand dollars worth of-
The lifetime of the truck.
Okay, fifty thousand dollars, please correct me.
One hundred and fifty.
One hundred and fifty thousand dollars of equipment. The other issue is from an issue of manning. Um, certi- good certified pumper operators. Um, now Matt can go to the fire, he has to have one less pumper operator. And, it seems though, as men, the men, women, people come into the fire department, they're headed more to the medical end of it. And, that's, these mechanical operators, and people that are interested in that, are harder to come by. So this is also a big logistics improvement for our fire department, and also going from getting rid of two trucks and going to one truck. So that's, that's, yes, sir.
Thank you.
What is the list price on fire?
Oh, God.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Six hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars.
That's the price of truck?
That's the purchase price of the truck.
Well now, uh, the town of Lyman is only, is liable for three hundred thousand, half of it?
Yeah, half a percent in the capital improvement.
So you're not paying it three, three hundred thousand and some odd dollars for ten years?
See, this is where I struggle, I, I talk in terms of the-
It's a long time to pay back three hundred thousand dollars. The ambulance is separate. This, this is the fire truck.
And, and that, and this is where I struggle, I, I have trouble talking in these terms that you're talking, the terms, the terms of the town, I'm talking the terms of the fire department, and we're borrowing, I'm looking to borrow six hundred forty-one over ten years.
Yeah. It's like borrowing over ten years.
So if you're gonna call it three hundred, then it's over five years.
I don't know, he's looking at it, town of Lyman's proceeding. We're gonna find a cap on that Dayton's gonna find.
No, we're not finding it for the other town.
What's in the fire department room in town right now?
Hundred and two something. A hundred and two, seven, fourteen, eleven.
The, the reason the two articles are separate.
Oh, no, no, that's not question, that's not question. The question is, it'll take ten years to pay back three hundred?
No, that's wrong, no. No, you're up.
Why that?
Because the, the two pieces go together.
Oh, they don't. It would be more than, it'd be more than six hundred and forty.
That's correct. It will be more than six hundred and forty.
You've got, you've got-
You've got the fire truck, that's six hundred and forty-one thousand-
Yeah.
Paid by two towns.
Yeah.
You have an ambulance of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, paid by two towns.
Yeah.
So we're gonna borrow money for both.
Yes, half of that is the town of Lyman, half is-
That's right, so it's more than three hundred thousand.
It is, for the fire truck, it's three hundred thousand.
Yeah, don't forget the ambulance.
Don't worry about the ambulance, the ambulance is seven years.
Okay.
Right, the ambulance is not money, and, and it's gonna be seven years, right?
Yes.
To pay back a hundred and some odd dollars.
Yeah, yes.
Seven years to pay back a hundred and some odd dollars. Am I right?
Yeah, you're looking at a- Yeah, you're looking at a payment of between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars a year. For two pieces of equipment.
And both towns paying.
And both towns are splitting at fifty.
Yeah, seven years doesn't seem quite fit. I don't know, I'm, I'm the only one talking, but I mean, it doesn't seem realistic to me to, to take ten years to pay back three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. It just doesn't seem realistic. But that's what it is, right, Dan?
Yep, the only alternative would be either waiting or drastically increasing your fire department budget.
Are these trucks under service right now?
No.
No.
Is there, is there a smoking major problem with the trucks?
In their age, hold on, one is out, one is back in.
I'm not gonna get mine apart, but I'm saying that they're gonna find out three hundred and some odd thousand dollars and you're gonna take ten years to pay it. It would seem to need, it would cut a lot off of that.
You're gonna increase the payment.
And plus, if you use what you have already in the fire truck.
You're gonna increase the payment. Well, we're gonna use the, the sale of the equipment towards the purchase price. Absolutely.
You need to, because if you don't.
Absolutely, gotta.
Everything else. What's in the unremunerated fund right now?
I don't have it. To be determined, okay.
To be determined?
Sure.
Well, well, I, you go in the town report and you look on page fifty-seven, which is the fire, fire department report, right? And the bottom line is three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. I mean, you know, I'd like to get some explanation. We don't know where the money is, we're, you know.
We, that, that's how we bought that used truck.
We just bought a used truck, right? I got a question for that used truck.
Sure.
You're for your truck, you paid so much for it?
Uh, we got eighty-nine thousand, yes.
No, no, I mean, you pick up trucks for the, for the fire chief, the trucks for the fire chief.
Oh, what is, how much is that, three? Yeah, oh, you mean the, the, the Explorer?
Yeah.
They allocated twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars, versus paying fifty-seven cents a mile, right? Is that, that's what it was?
Uh, nobody was getting paid.
No, so you get twelve thousand dollars, then you get the registry, the truck, the gas is put in the truck, the maintenance of the truck, all of that has to be done along, is that gonna come less than fifty-seven cents a mile?
What is that?
Nobody's, none of that.
Yeah, well, where are you, where are you going on this?
If you're gonna reimburse me for mileage, you're gonna be giving in to fifty-seven cents a mile for reimbursement.
What am I reimbursing him on?
He is using his vehicle.
His vehicle isn't set up with radios and all the other stuff, that's his personal vehicle.
Yeah, we love the boat and the fire.
Yeah, we, we, we're on top of it.
Yeah, well, still money that's been spent, and I don't know how to, how to get it out of you, you know? Does it come out, does that money come out of the capital? Same account?
Came out of the truck fund.
Same fund as the fire truck, right? The twelve thousand dollars you could've stolen on the loan.
Is that hundred and two thousand, what, just Lyman's share or is it Lyman's name? That you've got in your share right now?
That's just us.
Just us? So how much does Dayton get in? They don't even much, they don't do as well with their money as we do.
No, they don't.
They don't, I know they don't. How much, you ain't had any on what they got?
It'd be the same size.
No, it's not. I, I know it's all, they, they should have the same amount of money we got. Some, somewhere, somewhere around. So you got, so you've got almost two hundred thousand dollars, you can split towards the purchase price of this vehicle?
Two vehicles.
Well, two, all right, two vehicles. To, to the, okay, that's, yeah, I don't know. Two hundred thousand dollars.
Cost, the sale cost.
Yeah, you haven't even had to put in tracks month anything. You want, you haven't even.
Might be twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah. You get two hundred thousand dollars, right, Bill?
What's that?
You get two hundred thousand dollars.
Approximately.
Approximately. So how much is next, they're just gonna take, take it down, or how much money? How, how much, the two vehicles are cost, what?
You gotta ask Matt.
Matt, we're looking at. All right, all right, so, uh, so there's, there's a whole bunch of things here that, between the fire commission and both boards of select and Dayton Lyman that we've been discussing. One is using a hundred thousand dollars out of that current capital fund to apply for a down payment on the purchase price of, uh, what I'm guessing, what I'm looking at. So, I'm just gonna read it by line, the pumper tanker, six hundred and forty-one, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If we prepay, we save thirteen thousand dollars, seven ninety. If we trade those two trucks in, we save another eleven five. So that's a total price of six fifteen, nine thirty-five. The ambulance is two sixty-eight, nine seventy-five. We get a four discount of forty-seven hundred dollars, and the trade-in of the old ambulance, which they're gonna give us three thousand dollars for, that's two hundred and sixty-one, two seventy-five. The total cost of those two trucks, if we take advantage of all those discounts, is eight hundred and seventy-seven, two ten. And that, that does not include putting the reserve account that we have right now towards the purchase price. That is absolutely correct. So if.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If both, a lot of the reason why the article's written the way it was, because if both pieces pass in both towns, then we can lump this together and finance the entire package for ten years. So the, if we finance the entire package for ten years, we're looking at an interest rate of two point two five and two point eight, by what I call today. My suggestion to the boards was to put a hundred thousand dollars out of that capital down. We would be financing seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ten for ten years. Depending on the interest rate, your annual payment is between eighty-seven and ninety-three thousand dollars. And as of today, we allocate eighty thousand dollars into the, uh, truck fund annually with the reserve that's still in the truck fund after we put that eighty, uh, that hundred down. We can cover that ten thousand dollars-ish, depending on interest rate, that we're not raising for the first three to five years of the loan, and then the, uh.
Why, why aren't we taking the other hundred thousand dollars and applying to the purchase price? Why, why, why don't we, why don't we beat it down to, like Leo says, beat it down to five years, pay it, not ten years, pay it? If you put two hundred thousand dollars, you're knocking another hundred thousand dollars off. I mean, I mean, was that considered at all?
So, Morris, you, I understand what you're saying, and you're right. That's why the wording is written, so that we can make the decision when it's time to make it. Whatever's best for everything. Do you follow?
I, I follow, but I mean, but, but that wasn't an option, it was laid out there tonight.
The budget wouldn't allow it, we didn't have that kind of money. We can't, we have not put that kind of money in the fire department.
We got two hundred thousand dollars in, in, designated reserve account right now, that's what's been told to you.
I understand that, but you get that down to your, to that lower payment and then lower years, you've only got enough for one year. What's your payment gonna be on five years, the next year, the ne- next year?
Well, you figure that out and then, and, and appropriate it.
And then you.
I, I was gonna say, if you want financing for ten years, you're only financing for five years. You want paying that interest for five years?
And I'm gonna get to budget season next year, and I'm gonna support a double increase in the fire department capital budget.
You haven't given, you haven't given us the biggest, to make an intelligent thinking of, John, you have it.
John, if you leave a hundred thousand dollars in the truck fund and you borrow a hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna pay in two point eight-five interest on a hundred thousand dollars that you put in the truck fund. That you're leaving in the truck fund. You're borrowing money to put money in the, in the truck fund.
Now, you know, on this side of.
My wrong, my wrong.
Just, just listen, yes, you're right, but listen to me. On this side of the room, I hear, empty the truck fund, spend it all. On this side of the room, I hear, hey, we emptied the truck fund, we're gonna be in trouble.
Why?
Because we don't have any ready data. We, we, we appropriate money every year. If you know what your payment is next year, you raise that amount of money to cover that, that payment.
But you won't have. Yeah, that's fine. I, I.
If you can pay it off by year, that gives you a long view ahead. When you ever need anything, you won't be harmed by that. And you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So is just the town of Lyman looking to put a down payment down? Or is it also being offered, so they're matching what one is?
Okay, I have one more question, then I'll, then I'll move to the next. What is the difference between a purchase and a truck and a lease? That need a year, the ten years, that they, the truck's gone?
I'm sorry, what was that? Twenty-year trucks, Leo.
Huh?
Twenty-year trucks.
Good for twenty years.
That's, that's been, that's been the lifespan we've been shooting for.
Yeah, and that's fine, but why did lease, why did it?
He, he wasn't, what's the difference between lease purchase? It's really the same thing, if fire understanding correctly.
Yeah.
All right.
It's, it's.
What's the difference between lease and purchase?
You did all the research on the fire.
I mean, leases were just financing.
Right. I.
And we owned it at the end.
I, right, and I, I think in the fire truck world, it's a, it's a funny term that they use. We're financing the cost of the apparatus. We're not, the, the lease part of it really is, is poor wording in my, in my opinion.
Yeah, which is funny.
We're financing it through a leasing company or through, I, I don't know if you still have all those companies that get your way, but there's a handful of, that, that we've got, all of them are in leasing. I guess I don't have a better answer than you, before you determine all of it. We're, we're gonna have. The, one, one thing about this was because we here at Lyman decided to put this on the referendum, I had about a week and a half to throw this together, because it had to get to print for the ballot. So the mechanics behind fi- financing this package has not been discussed. Between me, the fire commission, and the boards of select, and we have not discussed the mechanics of how we're going to do this. What we've discussed is, is financing the fire truck and the ambulance for the amounts that are written in the article. So I think the mechanics, and I don't wanna speak for, for anybody up there, certainly don't wanna speak for them, but I think the mechanics are all up for discussion. I know the few discussions that I've had in Dayton, they have other ideas of different ways to get to this answer. So I, I think it's all up for discussion, and I'm sure everybody's gonna do the best things we can.
Leo, if we did ten years, our payment's forty-five thousand, one hundred. If we do five years, it's seventy-four thousand. But the interest will also be less, and we'd have more money at the end of the five years in the capital fund for more trucks.
If you need something, you can, I did, you're getting off, you're, you're clear.
So.
And, and one of the things that I worked on was.
It's not, it's not a lot of money for a counter pay.
No, no, what we were trying to do was work within the existing amount of money they were allocating. We have had enough time.
But the problem is, if you borrow money, you don't use the money that you have, you're paying interest on the money that you, that you have.
Yeah, but also look at what the rate is.
Doesn't make a difference, you gotta get one percent on that, on that, but you don't pay, you know what I mean?
I think it makes a huge difference. You're not paying seven, nine percent.
I've done several lease purchases in this. It's, it's, all of this is, it's a, like a car loan, except you pay it once a year, you pay a payment once a year. And the way the town that I work for now does it is we pay the first year. If we pay the first payment, the day you sign the loan. So it's like a down payment to bring down the, the loan. And then you pay it over the course of however many years you choose, and it's the same payment every year. But it's, it's pretty simple, I mean, it's not like a car you use here. You have to then purchase, dump more money into it to own it, it's not like that. But just like a car loan, you pay monthly, except you pay it yearly, then you own it after you have, go ahead, speed off.
Well, I just think, excuse me, given our current situation, to drain the account where we don't really know what's happening with the economy for the next whatever years would be not the, you know, we, you do have to consider, things are really, at a really strange time for all of us. So to take the account and wipe it out, just to get a five-year extra payment, I think is not sensical to me anyways. I think it makes more sense to be reserved in case something happens, and you have some reserve on the off chance.
That's the reason.
You know, the town.
Yes.
Doesn't do as well in the coming years.
And that's the reason this was not brought for town meeting because of the COVID situation and everything else, the uncertainty, that's why we waited, um, recently.
So if you waited for town, for after town meeting, which. Did you have another? Budgets have already been done by the time COVID happened?
No, yes.
So you waited, but the budget was already done, and then, so now we're in the midst of this pandemic, and we wanna spend money. We don't know what the future of our economy is?
We thought we'd have a better idea what our sp- us, economy was now than we would have in July. Also, we have the need for the equipment.
John, it has a lot, last year's appropriated from the town. Was it, is that in that truck fund now, is it that transferred over?
Yeah. Yeah.
Get transferred over?
That's the amount you have, just right now.
But we stayed in Jared's plan, and we made up that seventy thousand. Are we still on that plan? I thought if we have enough trust by the end of the summer, like we didn't even borrow it, we couldn't keep the money in the phases that we put aside.
Well, we can't purchase other trucks.
Yeah, fortunately, insurance only covered, paid out what on there?
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand on that Ford truck, because of the declining value, it was a lot more. It was, it was a work law, more to the fire department. Now, he sold it, or what's it, tried to replace the truck, like that, which is unbelievable.
So how much is the fire department budget going up this round if we go ahead and update it?
The reason why I ask that is I just got a seventy thousand dollars more, three more on my property, I got fifteen percent more on my property. And now we're gonna deal with the fire department budget, which I deal with closely daily. I know how fire department's operating, we need them, they're earning fourteen months, but everything has to be complete. We know that's how it works, that's just the way it is, that's, that's the system we're in. Hey, we're not gonna change it, we need them, they're already down here. So how, how do we? How, how are we supposed to know when we're going in next year and half, two years? Are we, are we going into debt, are we okay? I'm hearing this money flying around, like, I'm, I'm confused, I'm very confused. I gotta call Jerry tomorrow, I want a copy of the capital project program that we have laid out. I'd like to see it, see what we had, did we put the funds in there? Because the way we had that capital, we had fire hoses, we had apparatus, we had generators, we had everything else set up for the next fifteen years. Yeah, this is your truck account. Yeah, I understand that, so we're not. And that's, that's why we didn't go out more than the ten, that's why it was financed and put together the way it was so we would not have to increase either town's contribution to the cap, to the truck fund any more than it is today. So, yeah, over five years, putting another forty, fifty grand a town in the budget, sure. That, over the long run, that would save money. But given the situation, looking at everything, we figured this was the safest way to do it. So what I'm hearing, no, with everything in the capital line that we had, all the apparatus and everything, we're not gonna see, we're not gonna see an increase in the capital on that side. No. No, no increase on that capital.
Not from the plan that we made.
No. The truck fund is where we're a little bit in trouble, that we need to get solid again, that's what I'm hearing. You're gonna use all your money that's coming in currently in the truck fund to cover this lease, to build up, and gain any money in that truck fund, you are correct. You'll have to pick up the contribution to start building up more money. This, the other thing indirectly, purchasing this truck, or actually directly, will help the rest of your capital fund, because you're not maintaining as much hose or as much air packs or as much apparatus. So this pa- actually helps you a little with the other, I, you wait. You've got inflation, you've got everything else going, but at least you're getting rid of some equipment you don't have. You've got inflation, you've got everything else going, but at least you're getting rid of some equipment you don't have to maintain anyway. Sir.
So what you're saying is, in that initial three to five years, is the truck fund's gonna take a hit, a capital increase? Because there'll be a deficit, the payment's gonna exceed what's in the capital.
No, no. No, no, that's the reason.
It's not gonna increase the contributions.
Right.
For where it is.
That's why we wrote it that way.
Right, but the payments are gonna exceed.
No.
If you complete that.
If, yes, if we complete it, but if we do it the way we're doing it now, leaving that hundred in there. Because we're a little bit late next year and.
And, and I, I may have misspoke. What, what I meant when I spoke was, we don't have to increase the truck fund.
Okay.
If we follow the plan that was laid out, we will not complete that gap.
That was my question.
I follow that.
That was my question.
If we follow the plan.
I'm all that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That makes more sense.
What was the total payment for both vehicles together?
Ninety-seven thousand?
No, no, the, the, no, no, the annual payment.
Well, the, our cost was.
Forty-five thousand, one hundred, roughly.
Thank you. Forty-five thousand, ten hundred, right?
So we're set to raise eighty thousand, one thousand per town this, um, this fiscal year, is that done? Next fiscal year, it's set to go to a hundred thousand and, and a hundred thousand in two twenty, twenty twenty-three. And then it goes, moves, uh, actually, uh, it moves to a hundred and twenty thousand for twenty-four and twenty-five, and then it moves to a hundred and fifty thousand and goes to twenty thirty-two at a hundred and fifty thousand. So, if the payment is, what do you say, forty-five?
Whoa, so, so you're talking, you're talking hundred, hundred thousand, hundred fifty, so let's talk the payments about ninety thousand dollars. Because that's.
Divided by two.
So divide your hundred and fifty by two then.
Yeah.
Right? Because that, that's combined, the hundred and fifty in the, going in the capital is combined.
Okay.
And the payment combined is ninety.
So we'd be short ten thousand in the first year, the first year, but not any other year going out.
But we, we wouldn't.
We're raising a hu- four, a hundred, so that's fifty.
Right, so.
So you got forty-five, five, ten. So we would not be.
We, we wouldn't be, uh, if we, if we stick to the plan, we won't be. I guess the, the comment that I made was, we can use what's in the reserves and we don't have to increase that, that amount. We stick to the plan, we're good. If we use the reserves, then we don't have to increase that amount to cover our payment.
We're looking for a safety valve, is what we were looking for, we were looking, and, and, oh.
But that's why I was asking.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, we didn't discuss that.
I got it.
Sir.
Just real quick question for the map.
Yes.
Uh, I, I get the ninety-three pumper truck, I, I get all that, I believe, uh, two thousand seven ambulance, why is that being replaced?
That's, uh, you know, just as much road mileage as the ninety-three pumper. It's, uh, probably one of, in its day, was the most used emergency piece of apparatus that we have. It has to be the most reliable piece of apparatus that we have.
Yeah.
Uh, given it being an ambulance. It has significant rust and body damage and paint damage on the box and then now getting into the cab, that's going to, uh, take a significant amount, and I probably have the estimate someplace in my, uh, folder here. But it's a significant amount of cost to repair and the reliability of it as it sits is low. And that, in my opinion.
Mechanically, you're.
Mechanically and, and rust framework, uh, in, in my opinion, that's gonna be the most reliable.
Nope, I get it, I get it, okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Okay, fifteen, see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sell any tax-acquired property or in support of the, uh, let's, uh, I read my whole answer. To see if the town lineman will vote to join the main public employees retirement system as a participating local district effective December one, twenty twenty, and to offer regular plan AC to full-time employees who work at least thirty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks per year, and to a so fit. So, that are appointed to work at least thirty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks per year, the fixed term by the lineman board of selectmen. To authorize the current lineman select board chair to sign the contract between town and main public employees retirement system. To exclude all our other employees from participating in main curves, including selected officials. To allow its eligible employees who are currently employed by the town on December one, twenty twenty, who elect to join main curves to purchase credit for prior service with the town upon the employee's full payment of all associated costs. The town alignment will not participate in the purchase of prior service and so is the employees are responsible for paying their full liability associated with this service. Um, the last part of that, if, uh, there's an employee you need a five years, I believe, to be invested, longer retirement age, if, um, you're only gonna work another two or three years, you could actually purchase those five years, an employee can purchase them. That's what that last part of that is.
Do we have one of those? Do we currently have one of those?
Main curves?
No, one of those employees that needs to purchase that time.
No.
You don't inform the employees to find out how many employees would be interested in joining?
Yes, this came about, it's very similar to the fire cheat situation. We've got a town, um, excuse me, we have a selectmen's clerk position, we've got a film. We don't know what we're gonna do with the assessors right now of contract. What's, what it seems to be is, as if we recruit from other towns, a lot of towns have this benefit and we'd like to get it in place as a recruitment tool.
Which are some benefits?
I can't reel them off to you now.
Okay. Um, did you inform the employees to find out how many employees if you could, or have a different one?
Did not.
Okay, so, if, if every employee, um, decides to join, what would the cost for the town be?
Yeah, we have that number, we did the cost analysis on that. Because, but we don't, I don't have it tonight.
And, what is the town's match?
Ten percent.
Ten percent?
Employees be seven and a half. Ten point three five.
And, and then they make you cancel off the three fight there, correct?
Yes.
Because of the section two eighteen.
Yes.
So that's seven point six five percent. And then you have ICMA. So ICMA is at five percent match right now and, and going, that's gonna be four fifty-seven B.
That would be either one.
You think, you, it's one or the other. Okay, then answers that question. And if this was voted in, when would the employees be able to take advantage of this?
December first.
December first? Was this money budgeted?
No, it's, it now wasn't specifically.
Okay, so do you have the money for that?
Yes.
And if this is a money article, I noticed that there is no budget committee recommendation on it.
No, not reannounced.
Okay, and why did you exclude the town clerk?
Didn't exclude the town clerk.
Collective officials.
Collective officials. Because we were hoping to go in the direction of everybody being appointed. It was the, it fit in with the general direction and everything we were trying to have.
Well, it's gonna be my question, if, if that article fails and she stays elected, is this gonna exclude her from being able to participate because?
Yes, it will.
That's how it shakes up.
If, if the article fails.
If the article fails to make her appointed.
Right.
And she stays elected.
Right.
The way this is written, if this passes, she's not gonna be able to have, take advantage of that.
Right.
This feels like an ultimatum.
Kinda does.
Wasn't written that way.
And for.
Wasn't intended.
Punishment.
Wasn't at all intended or to be that much, yeah.
And again, I gotta say, that's why we put the charter in effect, that way the select board would have a set of rules that they need to follow. This would have went to the budget committee where we have some very educated people, they would have ironed it out, they would have brought the questions back to you before the public hearing, where we all look like the twenty-five bandits. That's it, that's the reason why the charter was put into effect. And again, you don't have easy jobs, you do not have easy jobs.
Sir, um, I want to go back to B. You seem to me like you're, you're asking the people to vote to allow the chair to sign. Why isn't it, why aren't you using the selectmen's board, why isn't the selectmen's board voting who's gonna sign?
Because the selectmen's board would, it's the way, it's, it's the way main curves presented it. They don't have the whole board signed, they just have one guy sign.
No, but you're asking the people to authorize you to sign. Why can't your own board authorize you to sign?
They can.
You're asking the people to.
That, again, Leo.
You're pulling the rest of the board under the bus.
No, not quite.
Oh, you guys don't wanna vote, you guys don't wanna vote, or who's gonna, who's gonna sign?
If we didn't want John to be able to sign for it, we wouldn't have had to have a chairman and a board.
Was prepared. That's not how the charter, charter says.
Leo, Leo, this was prepared by main curves, this was their statement for the article.
Yeah.
This was what, the way it's supposed to be done, that's all I can estimate.
Um, I, I remember seeing that article, I don't believe that main curves required us to exclude elected officials.
They don't.
So why is that in there? Why, you said that they got, they gave the guidance on how to write this article, but if they don't require that, why is it there?
They gave us guidance on the legalities of writing this article. We made the choice on not to include elected people.
That doesn't make sense to me, I, I don't understand why you would exclude Paula from this, from this auction.
That's where you make the mistake, we're not excluding Paula, we excluded elected officials.
Of what she is, and she has been working.
But you're conflating the two together.
Well, okay, she has.
You got a part.
I understand that, but she's been employed by this town for eleven years, participating in your retirement plan. Her retirement plan auction only offers her a five percent match.
Six.
Main, six, main curves offers a ten, why would she buy? Sorry, why would she not want to be able to participate in that plan? That, that's just wrong. It's not the same thing.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Just a question.
Sir.
You, you have the word elected in there now, so if you took the word elected out, could the, could, would it be possible for the board of selectmen to, uh, participate in this?
Yeah.
I guess you'd have to decide if it worked thirty-two hours a week or more.
Well, I don't know, I'm just asking, I mean, did you?
That was one of the reasons that was discussed.
Well, like, my point would be if, if, if the intention, if there was an intention to make sure the board of selectmen were not able to participate in this, then you could, the wording could be changed to say, uh, something to the effect that, with the exception of the board of selectmen, something like that. In other words, to exclude the board of selectmen explicitly and leave, because as it stands right now, inadvertent or not inadvertent, whatever, the, uh, town clerk is excluded.
What about your budget committee?
Well, there you go.
Every other elected official, it was much easier to say, elected officials.
You could specify your board, planning board, select board, budget board, you could specify those boards in this article, the way it's written, and take out elected officials if you chose to.
Yeah, you could.
I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay. Article fifteen. See if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sell any tax-acquired property and to issue a quick clean deed for the same. Sale to be by sealed bids of public auction, if to other than the owner of record at the time for foreclosure and no selectmen during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town on account of non-payment of taxes unless the owner of record at time of the foreclosure was the selectman of the son, daughter, spouse, parent, or what. Except that the municipal offices shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRS nine four three dash C for qualifying homestead property, property, if they choose to sell to anyone other than the former owners. What this was for, sometimes, um, we had, we've had a couple this year. We have a situation where there might be a family member that was supposed to be taking care of a piece of property. Let it go and rears, we're gonna take it for taxes. Right now, the only option we have is for the girl to option, public option. We've had a couple of family members say, hey, we didn't know what was going on, we've got the money right here, we'll pay the penalties, we'll pay everything, we wanna hang on to our property. We thought that the town is not in the land business, we don't wanna be landlords, we don't wanna sell land, doesn't work. This would allow us another chance for somebody came in and paid and saved us all that paperwork and chase them. And in the case of some of these families, um, if it was a two or three multi-generation thing, they could save their family thing, so. Yes, Lisa?
Do you need to quit playing it back to the president's reason, or quit bringing it back to the president who, who owned it? Who owned it? The town alignment owns it now, right? Someone owned it, the president owned it before him, before the town, before they had given the taxes and the town along and took up the foreclosure. Um, if a family member wants to come forward and pay that off, why aren't you just doing that and quickly getting back to them?
Because then what are we doing?
You quickly get back to them.
We're gonna have that ability.
Yes, you do have that ability. You've done it several times.
So.
I did it three times, obviously.
We've, we've done that.
Yep, executive session, they come in, they explain their situation.
We've done eight months.
No.
Nope, we had a family member committed pay.
And if, if.
You quit, you quit playing it back.
If it's between the foreclosure date and April first, they pay off all of the taxes that they currently owe, and if they didn't pay it off after April first, you estimate the, the, the coming year's tax bill and you just take your payment and quickly get back to them.
When, when I reviewed it, um, it looked really tight to me because it said only two options. That they could sell it at auction or sell it by sealed bid. There's no, there was no other option in the war article at all. So I passed it by every male legal, I also passed it by our town attorney, and they agreed that it was really, really tight. So what this does is it gives them the ability to do that where they only had two options in your current war article. This adds that third option and it's clear, concise, and it's more of a housekeeping issue.
I'm sure that no town wants to take anyone's property and that every town works with the families to quickly get back to them as quietly and as quickly as possible. And we've done it. And we've done it, yeah, many times.
That's fine. We questioned the article. We looked at it. We asked for professional advice. MMA, the attorney. That was the professional advice we got.
So this is just cleaning up what, what we have done in the past?
Yes, yes.
So there's no question.
Yes, it's not changing anything if that's what we have. But that's what we looked at. And, and we did research and check it.
So these people are on hold.
Leo.
If my brother doesn't pay taxes on his property, the name's on it, I come pay it and take the left?
No.
My relative.
I, I, I'm not sure I understand that question, Leo.
Instead of a relative coming to pay the taxes, then, then it's all right.
If a relative comes and deals the taxes, no matter, you, you, you don't change your quick claim to, to anyone else.
Right.
It goes back to the owner of record.
Right.
It doesn't go to the person. I can pay Jack's taxes and the quick claim, do you go back to Jack?
I thought, who'd you say relative?
It's the same with the relative.
Yeah, there's nothing to tell the relative. Anybody can pay the taxes.
The relative part of that only deals with the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen cannot do it for their family or anything like that.
Why not? I mean, that seems ridiculous.
To do it for their family?
Yes.
You'd have to refuse yourself, no more than, I can hire my kid, plow, come on.
Well, that's fine. You've got four of the quick numbers sitting here.
So they refuse themselves.
It says unless the owner of, of record at the time of foreclosure was the selectman, the son, daughter, spouse, or parent. That's the only time they can do it.
So the, if I, I, I was listening real close when you agreed. It's banning the selectmen from buying drugs in this property.
Yes.
Yes, that's the answer.
Thinking if I pay to see his taxes and getting a forty thousand dollar piece of property for a few thousand. That's the way I interpreted it.
To sell it back to the previous owner. And it's clear that it's not requested. It's more of a housekeeping issue.
So, I'm trying to say, it was all, I'm happy. Anything else? Yes, sir.
If you, if you make an amendment, what are you going to do now? Tell me what you can help me with.
Ask you if you've got anything else you'd like to talk about. And if you don't, I'm going home.
What are you going to do? You're going to, I think, somebody reviewed it? I'm going to have somebody look at it?
Yes, what we're going to, yes. We're going to call a charter attorney. Probably the one, we'll start with the one Mr. Demare suggested because he, he was.
Not while I work with. Two thousand and fifteen.
What I want to know, I want to know if you're going to make changes, if you need another hearing.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry.
If you're going to make changes, do you need another hearing?
Yes.
You need not hearing, you can't make this.
Right, if we're going to make any changes, we need another hearing. I'm sorry, Leo, I didn't.
You can't do a hearing until the day before the election.
Right. Now, we've got just a few, yes, ma'am.
So does that mean then in this situation, if you're going to reconsider everything that was discussed tonight and consult with another attorney, that item two on your agenda tonight, which is approve orders from November third, will not happen tonight, correct?
Some of it will.
Yes. If you have one that you can approve for your order that doesn't hold out, which one is that? Which are them? My old lady, right?
The liquor one?
Yes.
Liquor one.
Okay, so that's the only one that you guys will vote on as far as going to the ballot on November third tonight?
Fire truck.
We can, we are the town.
No, you don't need the order on those.
No?
No, you only need the order on the charter.
Yeah. And we can't do any of the charter ones till we speak with an attorney and get that cleared up.
Because you have to decide.
Yeah, problems to decide, yes.
So I got an email today from V S N S who print our ballots. And they said there won't be a problem getting the ballot to me on time if we sign off on Fri-, uh, Wednesday. So that gives you tonight, tomorrow night, I have to get the final ballot content to them on Wednesday.
Yeah, so we can't make any changes on that one.
Or you can't put the articles forward. Which is, I'm assuming what you're going to do, not put the other amendments forward for November third?
We haven't decided anything yet.
So.
We'll take it.
Right, but you also just said you need to consult with an attorney and have another public hearing on these articles.
Yes.
If we make a change, yes.
And, and, no, we've got to consult with the attorney anyway. And we'll find, we're going to catch twenty-two here. By the time we consult with an attorney and find out the legality, sir.
Now, I don't want to cut you off, but don't, don't feel that you have to consult with another attorney because my opinion is something. If someone feels they're going in the right direction, you should go forward. That's all. There's a process that us as citizens can take after this gets voted through. And then we're going to be in trouble. That's all.
I'd like to avoid that. If we, if we made a mistake, you have some support from some people, yeah. I, if, if.
Like article ten for me? Article ten is a big one. We've got a lot of church people that go to church on Sunday. They, they don't want drinking. It's as easy as that.
Right, and, and has been.
So that's a major change to the charter.
Yeah. Uh, that's not charter. It's ten charter. It's a state.
It says, shall the, pardon, shall the municipality approve the charter amendment returning to the public?
It's charter.
That's in there.
You're right.
I mean, these are, these are changes that are not just pencil changes and change burgers. They are changes in the document. But if you, if this group feels you're not, that's why I elected you. You do what you feel is right in the best interest of the town.
But we have these public hearings. If you've got a question.
That's all it is, a question.
And I feel obligated to get the right answer. And if there's, there's more than one person here with that question, that's why we have it. I'll chase it. And I'll get it to you. I don't know, I'll get it.
But I'm confused on the dates now. I'm hearing my town clerk say that we need to know by Wednesday at five.
We were told a week ago we had to have it done.
But you don't have enough time to have a couple of hearings?
No.
So I think you really have to make a decision tonight, what direction you folks are going.
Right, we're going to.
You're going to tomorrow.
Yeah. We've got, we've got it, we've got a meeting tomorrow night.
No, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not part of the public hearing. You can't add tomorrow's logistics on tonight's meeting. I'm sorry, you can't. This is the public hearing. You can talk all you want tomorrow. If you think if I'm here tomorrow night when I cuss about my taxes.
No, 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 no.
And you're getting rid of the assessor and automatically hiring somebody for thirty-five thousand dollars, which the charter says you can't. I mean, it's, it's just going all over the place here. Now my tolerance is starting to rise a little bit because you're doing things that do not fit into the charter. That's it. I don't believe you guys had the right discretion. Yes, you did. You can get rid of the assessor all you want. But for you to bring in a private firm, when the budget committee and the select board voted and we voted on what our tax rate was going to be, now you took that position out of the budget. You hired a private firm. What gives you the rights to bring? Did you, did you get free bids?
Jeff.
Did you get free bids?
Yeah, just, just a second.
Yeah.
We didn't get rid of the assessor.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, please.
Wait a minute.
It doesn't matter, that's probably.
He gave us notice. He gave us notice.
Anyway. So the assessor.
Notice, and what happened two days later?
I walked him out.
That's right, you got rid of them.
The assessor's position is no longer here at the town hall. You hired.
We get, wait, wait a minute. Jeff, what'd you just say? All right, on this, on the assessor thing.
I guess you can answer it this way, Mr. Simmons. Did you, you feel you had the right to just go ahead and go to the five?
We looked.
I, I asked the question. If you can't give me the answer, I don't know.
I have an answer. I have an answer, but it doesn't sit in the parameters you're giving me an answer with. The answer is this. We called, we called several assessing firms. They weren't interested. Okay? The only assessing firm that was interested was K I T.
Hey, line in town hall here, we're in a big mess. You interested? What about an honor piece? I did not let them do a photo on it, then we opened them up and impressed them. I mean, I don't, I'm sorry. That's why we put the charter in effect for these reasons. That's it. Now, you can move on, I understand. You really have to, I agree. No, I agree. But you have to understand why I'm sitting here and why I'm discussing.
I know. I know. We're backed into a corner I can't really talk about.
You guys have to decide if you're going to do your order for your charter amendments tonight. And then you have to sign. So your first one is order number two on our, I mean, order on article number two. Are you going to move it forward?
I've got some info for you guys. You're going to have like, get on the phone tomorrow, communicate. Find a good municipal attorney, see if we can get an agent over the phone, get some direction with us. We don't need, we're not going to take up. We can vote tomorrow. Don't need discussion. We can vote on these articles tomorrow if we have to. Or if you guys want to vote on them all the night, all it takes is a motion. Whatever your pleasure is.
Is a public hearing vote?
Anyway, I asked a few minutes ago, anybody that any felt anything else they would like to say? Jeff?
No, I'd just like to thank you for your services. It is appreciated. I hope you don't feel you're sitting here questioning what is going on. I don't appreciate anyone for your services because I do. I know what you guys, I know what you guys are under, I really do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Given that, what's your guys' point? You want to wait, huh? Yeah, okay. It's the end of the public hearing. It's adjourned. So, talk to me, please.
I'm going to make a motion to contact the charter attorney tomorrow and get some feedback. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? There we go.
Hey, what about the order in regards to the alcohol?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll wait for all of it. We'll do the best tomorrow. All in favor? There we go.